It is eleven thirty-two. I'd like to call today's meeting of the joint meeting between the City Commission of the City of Brownsville and the Public Utilities Board. We'll open the city's side first and then we'll do PUBs afterwards.
All right, I too would like to call the meeting to order and I'd like to move forward with the confirmation on our quorum. Rosie, where's Rosie?
Confirm.
We have a confirmation.
Yes, we have a quorum.
The city has confirmation as well?
Yes, chairman.
Okay, at this time, we would, I'd like everyone to stand with a pledge of allegiance to our flag and to our Texas flag.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, I'd like for everyone to take a moment of silence, please. Moving on to the next item, of course, do we have any public comments for this meeting?
No public comments.
All right. That's no public comment. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move into the discussion. Is that correct? On the discussion on collaboration between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Public Utilities Board to identify areas where coordination and planning are needed to achieve common goals, in particular, the memorandum of understanding, the MOU, covering charges of services provided between entities. Number, the second one would be the Resaca program and an update on Brownsville Public Utility Board's Integrated Resource Plan. Marilyn, if you can take the lead on this.
Well, welcome and thank you so much for joining us and hopefully we can have more commissioners welcome. And one of the things that we have on this item is the two attorneys from both governing bodies have been attending, you know, and meeting in various different negotiating patterns. And Helen, I see that you're on the screen and welcome and thank you for joining us and congratulations on your award that you got and for the City of Brownsville Public Works Department. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Legal and they can start it or whatever item and topic, or we can start with the presentation with the IRP. It could be, IRP will take fifteen minutes and Mr. Dombrowski is here to talk about that if you all so wish to start with that item.
I think we can start with IRP.
Okay.
All right.
Good morning, I believe still. Mark Dombrowski, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Brownsville Public Utilities and wanted to give you an update to the commission on our Integrated Resource Plan and what's going on there. So first is, as you're probably aware, as a municipal utility, we're obligated to actually deliver power to our customers and we have to acquire that power somehow. And we buy that from ERCOT. We buy all the power we need, but we also have resources and so we sell power into the ERCOT market. And the way it works is when the market prices are higher than what we can produce it for, we turn on our generators and we sell power into the market and we use that cash to buy down the rates that we have to charge our customers so it's for their benefit. When power prices are lower than we can produce it for, we shut everything off and we just take advantage of that low-cost power, like when the wind's really blowing. So that keeps our customers' costs low. So really, the whole idea behind Integrated Resource Plan is risk management and trying to reduce the cost to our customers. So what the IRP is going to do is help us decide how much and what kind of resources should we acquire in the future. So this will result in only a plan. We're not going to go out and, you know, issue an RFP or build a power plant tomorrow. This gives us a plan to follow in the future and as those assumptions change, we'll modify our plan in the future. Next page. So why are we doing it? So we do an Integrated Resource Plan about every five years. The last one was in 2020, so it's time for us to do it again. But we've also seen a growth in customer demand. You know, we've, population's growing here, a lot of businesses are coming down here to the RGV and so we're seeing more demand for electric services in here. We also have aging resources. Parts of Silas Ray are now more than sixty years old. They were not designed to be turned on and off like we use them now in the ERCOT market. So the technology is not necessarily optimal for what we use it for. There's also changes from ERCOT and the Public Utility Commission of Texas. After winter storm Yuri, they changed a lot of rules or regulations on us and so we have to make sure our resources can behave and follow those rules and take advantage of those things to try to lower the cost for our customers. But of course, we're always seeking ways to lower the cost, so anything we can do to be more efficient in producing power for our customers. Next slide. So the process is really about eighteen months, the public process. We've been working on this for more than two years now, but we started back in December of two thousand and twenty-four with our introduction. We expect to finish this possibly in May to June of two thousand and twenty-five. Along that line, we'll have four public workshops. We've had three or, excuse me, two workshops to date. The next workshop is February twenty-sixth, which is with our PubCap Board and with community organizations such as Port, Chamber Commerce, GBIK, those people that represent our customer base. Next page. So who's involved? At least from the PUB side, we have our power supply group, our finance, our engineering, our communications group, Legal. So it's all hands-on-deck exercise for B-Pub. We've also retained a consultant who's an expert in resource planning and they're really providing the technical support and the complex modeling needed to analyze all the scenarios that we're looking at for our resources. Our Board of Directors, our PubCap, which is serving as our voice of the customer, the community organizations group, and we've had about ten briefings with our board and PubCap along the way in addition to the workshops. And so what we're asking from the city commissioners is to provide us input on you things that you think we should consider in that. I'll give you some examples and you can take that here or we can take it by email or we'd be glad to meet with you individually. So the evaluation criteria and priorities. So obviously, one of the biggest priorities is cost, right? We want to keep the cost or rates as low as possible for our customers. There's also environmental attributes. Renewable energy is a predominant player in the ERCOT market with wind and solar. That produces near-zero greenhouse gases and so that is an attribute that many of our customers are asking for. Reliability. Reliability in terms of it's available and ready to run when we call on it. Remember what I told you, when the prices are high, we like to turn it on and generate revenue? Well, if it's not reliable and it doesn't come on, that exposes us to these high-market prices. Technology advances. As I pointed out, Silas Ray, the technology there is what we call a baseload unit. It's designed to be turned on and run for long periods of time. The way we run it today, we're turning it on and off multiple times, sometimes during the day. That causes fatigue on the equipment. So we want to see if there's some technology advances we can use. There's battery technology out there that we can store energy when it's really cheap and release the energy when it's more expensive, again, buying down our customers' rates. And of course, we're also looking at demand side, which is rooftop solar, community solar, demand reduction programs, so that if our customers use less energy, we can buy less energy for our customers and that, again, keeps our prices low. So all those things are criteria or are priorities. So if the commission has any specific priorities that you would like us to look at and evaluate, we'd be glad to listen to that and take that consideration when we are evaluating these. Finances, customer impacts. As I pointed out, this is really about rates. What that comes down to is risk management. So the whole reason we have resources is really to manage the risk of the exposure from the market from ERCOT. Prices in any one day can range anywhere from below zero per megawatt hour to over five thousand dollars per megawatt hour. And so by using our resources, we can manage that risk for our customers and ensure that we get the lowest-priced power possible.
I wanted to do a quick check-in. Mark, Helen, can you hear us okay? Good.
And so three of the areas that we're really focused in on is the financial implications. So those of you who are customers of B-Pub, you'll see the fuel purchase energy charge on your bill. That's the cost that we're passing through for us to acquire that power. Our goal is to get that cost as low as possible. Reliability is we want to invest in technologies that can get called upon and will run when we ask them to run. Finally, environmental. So we want to make sure that we are reducing our greenhouse gas and keeping our environmental footprint as low as possible in these resources. So we're trying to balance those three major impacts. And how to stay informed. As I said, we have our workshop number three with the PubCap is on February twenty-sixth. We expect on March tenth to have a workshop with our Board of Directors to present the PubCap recommendations to them and start. And start working through with our Board of Directors which of the scenarios, which priorities are most important to finalize that plan. On our website, if you go to brownsville-pub.com/irp, you can find all the materials that we presented to our Board of Directors in the PubCap, background information, as well as our previous Integrated Resource Plans. And of course, if you contact B-Pub office, we'd be glad to make sure that you get whatever information you need. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mark. And I just want to encourage the commission to attend these workshops if they can to understand our approach and see what the community says in terms of their priorities and how that's being taken into account. So I think it's really important. Thank you.
Okay, Marilyn, we, that concludes the IRP. Any other discussion from city commissioners, from board members on this topic? I did note that, Mark, the next meeting is scheduled for February twenty-sixth?
That is correct.
So Marilyn, let's make sure that we collaborate with the city, city officials, to see if we can increase participation. For the record, I didn't even make the last one, but they are important. And I think the presentation that Mark just presented to this body and to the communities is incredibly important and for the community to understand how this utility functions, particularly when it comes to generation and providing electricity. All right, Marilyn, what's our next item?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
How often do we collaborate? I'm unaware because I haven't been to any of these, but how often do we collaborate to talk about the IRP when it comes to growth with like the city? For example, GBIK, their seven hundred and fifty acre lot, how much collaboration happens there? I understand the public meetings, but how many private meetings do we do?
Right, so we've had GBIK, they were actually present at our last workshop and provided input there. We do, it was called a load forecast and try to figure out how much energy do we need to acquire to serve our customers over the long period. It's twenty years. And we've just gone to a new way of using it, it's called a statistically adjusted end-use model. And so really what we're looking at is historical trends. And so we don't necessarily pick one customer here and there because the probability of any one future customer showing up is hard to calculate, but we do have very good historical information. And so one of our scenarios is looking at what happens if we get one of these really large loads coming in. And so I think some of you heard about some businesses relocating or setting up shop here in the Brownsville area. That could add a hundred or two hundred megawatts to our load. So just in comparison, we're about three hundred and thirty megawatts now. So that's a significant increase. We are running a scenario that looks at that and we've worked with GBIK to try to figure out when those might happen, as well as the Port area, because we do serve some of the customers out of the Port. So we are working closely with them.
Perfect. I just wanted to, I just didn't know if we have to attend the workshops or you guys have your own private meetings with entities like PU, with the Port and GBIK specifically?
Our key accounts work closely with both the Port and GBIK, so we meet with them regularly, almost on a monthly basis.
And I think, I don't want to get too much off-topic, but in the sessions that we've had, they kind of explained that even though we know that some businesses are coming, we may not necessarily take that load into consideration. But at the same time, it doesn't limit PUB and us being able to provide services to a large load. So it's just really like a plan of reference and if somebody big comes in and it wasn't in the plan, we can still do it with no issue.
Just want to get back to risk management. So say, for example, we think a customer's going to show up, a large manufacturer, they need a hundred megawatts of power. If we were to put that to our plan, it would tell us, all right, if we think they're going to show up in two thousand and twenty-seven, we need to start now by securing those resources. We could either build it or go out and sign a contract for, or power purchase agreement for a hundred megawatts. And then that customer doesn't show up, well, we're still on the hook to complete that plant and run it or buy that power from Power Purchase for sometimes ten, fifteen, twenty years. And so that's that risk management. We'd be buying more power than we actually can use. So we have to be careful about how we adjust these plans and try to do it with more certainty. And that's the reason why we use this historical statistically adjusted end-use model, because that reflects what people really do.
Thank you.
And Mark, just for clarification for the body, for the community that may be watching, when you talk about three hundred and thirty megawatts, that lights up the entire city. That's our current demands.
That's correct. That's the peak demand that we've had so far.
All right. Continue on this topic or do we move on to the next one? Marilyn, I think we can move on to the, to the Resaca program and then come up to the MOU.
So at this time, we don't really have much of a Resaca program. We are working through it and we do have various different things that we're working through. I announced at the last meeting that we had received a grant and we had gone some of that. I don't have a formal presentation for you all to discuss about, you know, Resacas, but it was intended so that way you all can give us feedback, how do we proceed? We understood from the last meeting that we were on a holding pattern and for us to continue as we were doing, we have an increase. We've managing operations, we're in the process of changing various different dredging locations that we're looking at, but other than that is, it's really up for you all to discuss. Resacas, anything you want to discuss, unless you want to bring it up. Oh, thank you for the reminder, for the restore. So the Restore project did kick off. That's a second project and that is part of the bank and bank, bank management. So there's several different people, if you've heard, from members of the communities that we are working with the various different people involved there. The Restore project is a federal program and that was from the U.S. Treasury Administrator for TCEQ that was then awarded to the Brownsville Public Utilities Board. It had a match, but now the match is really more of a full grant and the process took a long time. I don't want to know how long it took, but you know, about eight years, I think, from the beginning to where we are right now. And from that portion where it is, part of the management of that project would be storm interceptors. So we are working on adding and expanding and we work closely and I believe that, I'm not sure, Doro, if he's on, but his team has been working on the technical side of the various different areas of the Resaca and where it is and updates have been going at that meeting on there. So there are storm interceptors, there's bank and management, there is also various different revegetation, removing invasive species, removing those areas of plants that are going to suffocate the wildlife in addition to the water quality in there, it suffocates the oxygen in there. So all of that is in the process of trying to remove. And at the end, we'll have revitalized Resaca that is going to do with additional trees and reforestation that is to its natural habitat. If there are some trees that were removed, that were considered that in, you know, about to decay or about to fall or things that were not in the process, and if anything has happened, please, by all means, let us know and that's, and I don't know if you have any questions on that or anything else, or thank you for reminding me about that.
I would like to add, this is Helen, I couldn't be with you because my, unfortunately, my husband had surgery yesterday, but I would have loved to be there with you discussing our collaboration. I will hand it off to Alan Gard. He will be speaking to, we did receive direction by the mayor and city commission to speak of a possible drainage fee and so we are working on, working on the consultant services for that and our deputy city manager can give an update as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Very briefly, we have prepared our request for proposals for a drainage utility study, which could potentially include a drainage fee and it is about ready. It should go out, should be published this weekend. And so we're looking at, I think we reported on the timeline last time, that the study should be complete around early fall, August or September. There's going to be several community engagement opportunities during the process for the community to come and speak about drainage, drainage issues, drainage projects and different things like that. And then once a recommendation comes from the consultant, the commission will discuss that and will move that forward with some type of recommendation being enacted by the end of the year.
Thank you for that information, Marilyn. Could you give us a quick update on the Resaca fee? We started the Resaca fee approximately three years ago.
Yes.
The mayor, John Cowan, was elected as a mayor. We discussed that Resaca fee many times and we know the fee was downgraded or is it frozen?
Yes, at this time, the fee has been frozen. The Public Utilities Board did take that action to pause the fee where it was at, from where it was originally supposed to escalate, until we knew which parts of the program were going to remain in-house and which part of the program was going to be taken on by the City of Brownsville. The intent of the fee was a three-part program. It was for dredging to be able to do the project, restore the project for the Army Corps of Engineers and in-house dredging as well. And all of that is what the fees are covering. As new grants come in and are able to help and revitalize some of these areas or cleanup, then that matching funds comes from that Resaca fee as well, as we need to replace equipment or things, because we do have aging equipment, that's where that fee is also where it's coming from. But that is good and thank you all for the support until we know exactly where it is, where we expect for the fee to remain until we come up and we will try and, you know, as soon as possible, give you all, but we just need a little bit of guidance on what parts and what sections and what Resacas. And it sounds like you all are working on different, I guess, priorities. The city is working through the drainage and we're working on water quality and so when we place those two items and so the Resaca is not really for drainage fee at all, it's, it happens to be a secondary benefit. You know, the Resaca fee is for the project that we currently have that was approved by the city commission and thank you for that adoption of that fee that helps with operations of the Public Utilities Board.
I thought it was important that we clarify that and so this bodies, both bodies understand that the fee structure, it stopped. We are analyzing, trying to work very closely with administration and of course with the city on what direction that's going to go in.
So I do have a question. Do you have an update on the federal, on our request to alter the requirements in terms of the land acquisition and also the cost share in the program?
Yes, all of that is right now, there is at the district level, so how it is, but it did make it into the presidential bill. It did get executed. What does that mean? The local contribution can be reduced and also, what that also means is that the fee symbol, there's alternate amounts on there. I'm going to defer to Legal because they've been taking very active on the real estate aspect of it and the various different mechanisms that can be acquired on there.
Good morning, commission and board. Paul Gonzalez. The discussions on the non-standard estates, the latest one was actually held on Friday. I was not a participant. It involved B-Pub staff. Doro is the principal contact, so it was a small group to get an update. I don't think Mr. Trevino and I were involved in that particular meeting, but they're working on it at the division level, at the Galveston District level. So perhaps we'll have more to say after today. I was hoping Mr. Garcia would be here.
I do want to add on that is we're also working through the forty million dollars that are appropriated for the vicinity of the Brownsville, Texas, community and that was intended for SRWA. So it's, I know it's, I don't want to go too off-topic, but it involves as an MOU the various different things that we collaborate together. SRWA, as you all are aware of, but for members of the community, is our Southland Regional Water Authority, which happens to consist of various different members and part of that was intended for the brackish desalinization to help with the water supply for the community of City of Brownsville. Resacas is also part of that plan and strategic management, which includes the deepening to include water storage for us. So as water comes down the river, then we can park it into our Resacas for their eventual treatment. SRWA is another management. The same bill that talks about what you have mentioned, Mayor, is the forty million is in that same bill. I was going through the various different, to confirm that that language made it and I did check with the Division of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and all of that language is in there.
I would say from regarding the Resaca, there has, we do, we will follow up on that Friday call to understand the language that they're open to modifying and we still do have concerns of the overall cost of the matching funds that would be borne through an agreement through directly with the city. And so I believe they were going to review the cost in first quarter of this year. So our question also, from a financial standpoint and the matching funds, is has that been reviewed and are understanding that it may go up? And so, because construction costs unfortunately don't go the other way, right? They usually go up rather than going down. So we'll, we'll go ahead and circle back and include Legal since they weren't on that Friday call, but also understand if they've updated any of their language, which they, I mean, costs, which they indicated may happen first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you.
Thank you for that information, Helen. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, which is the MOU. Would the city like to start the other introduction on the MOU and our progress and where we're at with PUB?
Yes, go ahead, Alan and Will.
Yeah, hello. I believe that both parties have had the MOU explained to them in their individual executive sessions. There's been a lot of work that has gone into this. I don't know if there's any lingering questions amongst the bodies. Just a reminder, this is only covering services that do not include water, wastewater and electricity. So these are just the extraneous services that each party provides to the other.
Thank you for that, Will. And we have worked very closely with our body and with understanding this MOU. We have been provided constant updates. Juan or Paul, do you guys have anything to add or to chime in on this?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, well, just the both governing bodies directed last time pretty serious and I'm trying to get this done by this meeting, work through a lot of meetings through the city attorney's office and to drive something in final form here. So.
Can you hear?
So the last final form has been...
Please start over so we can get the recording.
Oh, yeah, sorry. No, just Juan, I came in here for B-Pub, just commenting that we took the commission and both governing bodies directive to get this done, right, to kind of put this issue to bed. Worked closely with the city attorney's office on the draft, went through several revisions, met with them several times. It's now in a format that I think that we're all comfortable with. There's a couple, I think, of cleanup items on the Exhibit A, just clarifying some of the services. But aside from that, you know, and we think it's in a final form and we've discussed it with our governing body and are comfortable with it and my understanding is the city is as well. So, you know, we'll work to get that finalized. So, you know, we'll work to get that finalized, if you have any.
Yeah, this setup is great. I like Will's idea. So the, the agreement is a master services type of agreement, so that we can just be flexible and responsive as services may evolve in the future. And there are additional opportunities to be efficient with each other and coordinate on this. It'll provide the accounting for expenses going back and forth among the bodies. And it leaves to the city manager and to the general manager at BPUB, the coordination that needs to be happening, right, in order to work these issues through and make sure that everything's defined. Cost principles are outlined very clearly, as it was specified in the December 10 presentation. So consistent with that, there are even specific references to the best practices that government finance officers use in these, in these types of situations, intra-governmental type of charges and services. So we hope that this is what's been presented. We hope that this has been, that this is very close to actually being brought back to each governing body for execution in the, in an upcoming meeting where there's actual action allowed. But that's about it.
Okay. And it seems, from our perspective, from what we're hearing from our legal, especially last night, that this document has been, is going to be finalized very soon. This is a time to perhaps, if there's any comments or any discussion between the city commission and PUP, it might be a good time to bring up some concerns or some issues. But I'm sure that Will has made you all aware of how this is being developed, how this MOU is being crafted out. And again, we, I hope we're at the end of this process where we're going to finalize this document.
I think I'll start with a question for counsel on both sides. As this is developing, if I'm not mistaken, the direction this is going is it will provide for, if there is a difference or a delta in what one party is providing to the other, that there will be a bill for those services? Is that correct? Or that it would be deducted from the transfer, however you want to put it?
No, I think the...
We want bills.
Bills?
Yeah, invoices and checks.
Yeah, the agreement contemplates that we will receive invoices, that we will be able to review and then pay separately, right? I think in the agreement, we have made it clear that there, unless the language was changed, I think we made it clear that there will be nothing taken from the transfer.
Okay, then let me go on the record saying I believe this action will violate the city charter. And as officials of the city of Brownsville, since you've been appointed by the city commission, your body doesn't have authority to enter into an agreement that violates the charter. And likewise, on the city commission side, we're not allowed to violate the charter. So until I see legal arguments for how we are reconciling, taking an action that violates the charter, I'm not going to be satisfied with this.
Any other comments on Mr. Delos Santos?
I just want to ask our counsel, do you, do you believe this violates the city charter? This particular agreement, this MOU? I don't believe it does. The charter, and let me explain why. I'm just pulling up the charter. So if everybody wants to follow along, you have a computer, you can. Articles six, utilities board, section one, management subsection B, it talks about the fixing of rates. And it says, "In connection with the management and operation of the various systems and the expenditures and application of the revenues therfrom, the utilities board shall be vested with all powers of the city with respect thereto, except the fixing of rates, fees, and charges for such services. Except that no charge shall be made for any utilities furnished or used for city purposes and shall have full power and authority to make rules and regulations governing their furnishing of electricity, blah, blah, blah." So I think in this instance, when you look at what the charter says, shall be made, except no charge shall be made for any utilities furnished and used for city purposes, I don't believe it contemplates the services that this agreement is related to, which is, you know, stalling streetlights, stalling, doing patching. I think it more references water, wastewater, and electricity. So if we were, if you were asking me if we are paying for those services as a city, then I would say in that instance, maybe we are being, violating the charter. But in the instance of the actual other services that we provide that have, that they are not part of the utilities, I would say those don't violate the charter.
I look forward to seeing the final document then, so that I can review that and hopefully reach that same conclusion. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Delos Santos. And Will, any comment from our legal on this topic at this time?
The only comment is that you have plenty of time to, to review what we'll do, is complete. We're going to take any additional comments the governing bodies had, complete the draft, so that it can be presented to you and, and you can do all the deliberations you believe, each of you believe necessary in order to consider it and move on.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that makes, that makes sense. So that is discussion on the MOU. Anything else from, any comments from the PUP board members? City of Brownsville, city commissioners, anything else on this topic before we move into, perhaps we can recess into closed meeting? Okay.
I have a comment.
We can hear you.
Thank you. From the updates by staff on the resaca program, and am I to understand that the city commission is on board with, you know, the path that we're on, which is if, if the cost sharing is, is at a level that, that the city thinks is acceptable, that we will be proceeding with the Corps of Engineer program?
I don't know that I can say we're in agreement on that right now. I think we're still looking at what the big picture's going to be with where we want to go with this, before we make any final decisions. That's my position at least.
Are there, are there any thresholds that you have considered? If, you know, if, if we can be accommodating, accommodated, you know, by the Corps of Engineers, you know, below a certain amount, then, then it would be, you know, like just go, no-go decisions? Have you contemplated anything like that?
I think for me, one of the, one of the thresholds is to what extent owning the property in fee simple would be, and what the solutions are around that. And if we can reach something that we're satisfied with, won't be too egregious and won't take advantage of too many citizens, it's more likely to be agreeable to the city.
For me, it would be 100% against having anybody's land taken. I don't believe that we should do that. That's not our call. And I would not go with it if that is still on the table.
Is it still on the table?
Yes, it is.
No.
We need to get an interpretation of what the agreement is, and at this time it's too early to tell, but we'll come back with a full interpretation once that decision and what is the, but thank you for the feedback and comments, Commissioner, we will look into all of the various different commissions. But this is the time to please let us know.
And I think because the city's a sponsor, based on past actions, of course, that the city attorney's office would need to review the agreement and see if we're okay with it. And then advise you all.
Yeah, I think for us, it's just important for us to do our due diligence, have enough information. There still seems to be some contingencies, and there's still some gray areas. We want to be as clear as possible and just know what we're getting ourselves into, just to ensure that we're on the right path and to ensure that we're doing our due diligence for the citizens of Brownsville.
Right, right. No, I completely agree. I think for us, we want to, you know, be clear, on-go, no-go decisions, so that we are able to not collect the fee if, if the project is not going to, you know, come to fruition. So any, and I know that there's still a lot to, you know, a lot of information, but I think that we do have a lot of information right now, enough to be able to, to determine what, what is going to be, you know, like at what point we decide that this is not going to be feasible. And, and the sooner we can get to that, you know, that, that decision, I think the best it will be for ratepayers.
I also agree with Dr. Somwata that we've been pushing this project and trying to understand it for at least two or three years with visits to Galveston, by both boards, trying to understand the fee simple. I know the mayor and I were in Washington, and we, we were very, we were very concerned about properties being taken from folks so they could work on the resaca banks. But I do think that we should be, we should make a decision soon to explain to the Army Corps of Engineers that this project's not fit for us. Now, they have come back and said, look, we can work with you guys on the fee simple and maybe reduce some of the infringement on private property. But I think that needs to be clarified. And if that's not, is going to be acceptable, then we just need to move on.
Can I have a clarification? I think there was a comment earlier that we are collecting the resaca fee, and we need to maybe, was that stated earlier by PUP, maybe?
Does PUP mention that it's on, the increases are paused, but the fee is still being collected, as I understand it?
Okay. I just want to make sure that even though, let's say the resaca project does not move forward, that resaca fee has other uses, right, is my understanding?
That is correct. We currently have our dredging operations part of that fee that we're taking off of the base rates, and we would have to do a full cost of service on the water and wastewater, well, on water, to do that and to have a right allocation model involved in there. The resaca fee also is paying for other grants outside of the grant that is currently in question for with the Army Corps of Engineers. We have two others that we're doing. Another one is now with the Bureau of Reclamation, which we're working through the ward right now. And with the recent presidential order of the pause no-go and go, we're in the process of making sure that everything moves forward with that grant as well. The more grants we receive, they've, and the higher matching that we get from the federal government, that's less burden on our community here. And so that is a great opportunity to take advantage, to help bring in federal dollars into our community.
Thank you so much for that. I do believe that preservation of resacas and maintenance of resacas are extremely important, not only for our ecosystem, but as well as towards drainage. You know, we, in a couple months, we'll go through hurricane season, and I used to just love rain. But now, you know, if there's flooding, it's, it's something very scary for me as a representative, because I want to be able to help. And the best way to do that is through maintain, the maintaining of our resacas. So that's something that I never thought about as a citizen and as a pay, as a taxpayer, but it's so important for drainage. And so I would rather pay a $6.25 fee than having to pay for my vehicle or, you know, renovation of my house because water is inside my house or water's in my car. So that's something that I've, you know, thought about with the knowledge of this information. So thank you for sharing that out, Marilyn.
Mr. Renon?
Yes.
Me. I have a question for you. I agree that we have to put all these matters to bed, and we sit on them for years. As the chair of PUP, what do you think is some of the, causes some of the delays in our collaborative efforts?
On this particular project, you're talking about the initiation of the resaca fee and then the collaboration with the Corps of Engineers. Very, very slow process with the federal government. I know that we have visited the Corps of Engineers in Galveston in Washington, DC. We kind of pushed back on them that this would be hard for us on the simple fee on acquiring land. Why does it take so long? This is good old-fashioned federal bureaucracy. It's really...
Well, I'm talking about our issue, meaning, between like MOUs or what we have to do, because I do believe that Mrs. Amora, when she's like, are you guys ready to, what are we going to do with the fee? And everyone keeps saying, well, we're not ready. There's still more information. There's still more things we have to do. There's still, and, and for me, I'm, I'm a pretty impatient person. That's just how I am. I never thought I'd get into politics. I think that I represent a lot of citizens that probably feel the same way, because there's, it seems like there's a lot of movement, but yet there's nothing happening, right? And people have a lot of questions, and I'm sure you receive the same things we receive, which people are saying, why am I getting charged a resaca fee? And for our end, ours is to come to some sort of a conclusion here. What are we going to do? Are we going to still continue waiting for federal grants that might take forever to know if we're even going to get reimbursed for that? Because I was on the board of PUP in 2015, 16, when I went to the Corps of Engineers. And, and we're talking 10 years later, and we're still going to be waiting for the Corps of Engineers. I think as a city, we owe it to our constituents, right, to say, what are we going to do? Are we going to still sit here and wait? I just wanted to know kind of, what can we do better, us, the city, to help facilitate a collaborative effort to, to actually come to decisions, even if we don't, even if we say our decision is based off the fact that we can't wait for federal grants anymore, federal programs, that we have no control over?
I think everything you just said, we, we process that same concern and frustration. Dr. Somwata came on board, the mayor came on board. I mean, we hammered this pretty, pretty hard. The resaca fee, we certainly didn't want the ratepayers to be burdened with paying the resaca fee, us collecting money without explaining the intent. The original intent for that resaca fee was a collaborative effort with the Corps of Engineers, and that was a 20-year plan, the way I understood it. That plan and that, that, that project has been on hold for two or three years at least. And I know that Roy was, went up to Galveston to try to understand it, and the mayor asked. I don't have an answer. It's very, very slow, and there's a lot of frustration on our part as well on certain topics and certain items. That MOU, I asked last night. I can't tell you because I was an executive, but we're frustrated. It takes too long. Why isn't it complete? And we go back and forth with, the legal team goes back and forth with the city, and they're trying to do their due diligence, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure how we can fast-track any of this. There are certain things that we can, we're a little bit better at, but it's tough.
And I always say, I, I agree with you, right? I think that due diligence is important. We owe that to our constituents. But also, when things take years, it's kind of frustrating. What I, what I would like the board of PUP to consider, and my fellow commissioners, is a collaborative effort for communication, not between ourselves, to the public. I do believe that as we continue battling and discussing resacafis, our, the citizens of Brownsville are unaware. And, and us saying that we've put it out there, we're not throwing blame anywhere. The blame is on all of us in here. We are one city, right? What I'm trying to say is, if I talk to my neighbor, they have no idea about a resaca fee, or they're upset about it, but they don't know why we're taking two or three years of charging. What is happening before we make and deliberate and make a final decision on what's going to happen with that money? People don't know that we're using the resaca fee to, to actually dredge, which is good. We need that, right? Like, there's a lot of good things happening, but our, our citizens are completely unaware. And, and, and... And, and, and at the end of the day, whatever happens, whether we keep charging the fee and we dredge and we don't, or we up the fee or lower the fee, then it just comes in as this was all a two, three-year backdoor deal that was done behind the, the backs of citizens. And, and, and I don't want that to happen, because I know, I know that that's not happening, right? I, I just think we have to do such a much better job in a collaborative marketing approach from P U B and the city of Brownsville and, and holding hands, saying, "We are here to service you," right? "We're here trying to make the best decisions for you." And this is where we are right now. And you might disagree with that, but this is where we are and this is why we can't make certain decisions right now. And that's why you're still paying a fee or whatever that may be, and this is what it's being used for. That, that would just be a comment for us to consider.
Everything you're saying, Tina, you're on target. We, we discussed those same issues. I have discussed with administration several times. We intended to collect this resaca fee to work on this long project. It's paused. We need to tell the public. The mayor and I have discussed this. We need to tell the public.
But that was just one project, though, out of...
Well, we're talking about the collection of resaca fees. We're talking about taking ratepayers' funds. We're talking about holding those funds and not executing the original intent for those funds. But now we shifted into, well, we can use some of those funds to keep the resaca dredging and keep some maintenance work on the resaca. But I do believe that we have an obligation to explain to the public, this is what we intended to do three, four years ago. And that's, to me, that project has stopped. And we still collect the fees, but when the mayor came in, Dr. Samora, we, we froze those fees. Okay, let's freeze the fees. Helen has been very adamant and very concerned about what are we, what's happening with those fees? Do we have them? Mike is asked all the time, "Where, where are those fees at? How much money do we have in that account?" We're trying to, and that's all in public. Dr. Holman is always asking, "Where, where are those fees being collected? Were they being held and are we spending them?" So we're being very careful with this. I think that it's time to tell the public, what direction are we going to take?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, you know, we all inherited this project, right? And, you know, there's hundreds of millions of dollars of federal funding attached to this award, right? And obviously, it's, it could create a lot of good for our community, so we don't want to lose that. A couple of things that have happened recently, right? Phase one or, or contract one was included in the president's budget, which kickstarts this program. That's a huge deal, right? It ensures that this program will be funded. But we don't want to implement this project the way it is, because of the fee simple, you know, acquisition issues, which I am completely against. If that's, if the, if the Corps doesn't budge, then, then this thing dies. They originally told us they, they would not budge on this, but now they're saying they will. And they originally said they wouldn't, they wouldn't lower the cost share. Now they will. So we've made progress here. There is a lot of progress. And it's a collaborative process, including our congressman and all, all our officials. So like, unfortunately, it does take time. But do we want to kill the project because it may or may not happen? I don't know if we're at that stage of, of, we don't have all the facts yet.
And I think, I think my point, Mayor, is exactly that soundbite that took 60 seconds should be hand-in-hand with the Chair, with our City Manager, with our General Manager and CEO, putting that out there to the public. That's it. Just that 60-second soundbite, saying, "We don't want to kill this project. This just happened. This is what's happening. This is the intent." It was latched on to hundreds of millions of dollars. People just don't know. And whether they agree or disagree, it's out there for people to understand. And, and part of understanding is disagreement. That's okay, but they're informed.
I also want to clarify that the original intent of the resaca fee was not only to collect the local match for the Corps of Engineers project. It was also to do the in-house dredging and, and to, to serve as the match for other grants from the state, like we have the Restore Grant. So the, the elements of the resaca fee that are not the Corps of Engineers have not been on pause. They, those have been continuing throughout the year. So the money is being, being used for that. However, if the Corps of Engineers project is not going to proceed, my interest is in going back to that rate-setting ordinance and, and clarify that and, and come up with a new schedule. Because right now, we paused the increase that was eventually going to be $10 or $12. But, you know, I don't think, I don't, we, we really need to, to look at what is it that we want to keep spending? I, for one, I fully support the, the in-house dredging, whether, whether it's the city doing it, whether it's P U B doing it. That dredging is, is highly valuable for us. The Corps of Engineers, most of that money is going to be used for ecosystem restoration. Now, that can have a lot of value as far, as far as wildlife habitat, tourism, in, in, in different areas. But it is, it is really, again, a, a decision that, that City Commission, right, needs to, needs to take. We are simply, you know, just, just sort of helping, you know, with, with the grant, but it's not ultimately our decision. The other aspects of the fee, though, those are things that are within our purview to administer and, and make decisions about.
But to your point...
I would say, I would just like to add that the city of Brownsville holds all the portion that we've been transferred by P U B in a separate account, and we have not expended any of that money. Because we still do not know how, as the mayor said, whether this will be some other type of land impact to our residents, easements versus fee simple. And also, there is a question on what will be the, while the first contract has, is, has funding, there's still a question as to the cost of future contracts, which we're still waiting on those, that, that amount that the city would be responsible for.
You know, given this conversation, I would like to challenge the, our administration, the city to, we need to have a hard date to determine whether or not this project is going to be feasible or whether or not it's not going to be feasible. We need to give direction to the community, explain publicly what we're doing with this project. I don't, I'm afraid to say 60 days or 90 days, but I think we need to have a hard calendar date to be able to decisively, definitively say, "Look, we're going this direction or we're not going this direction." I, I don't know how the mayor feels or how Helen feels, but I'd like to challenge our administration to let's get to the finish line. What direction are we going? And then, of course, we have to explain these, the collection of these, the resaca fee. I'm glad Dr. Samora chimed in, because she has a great memory and she remembers a lot of details. But I, I think we have an obligation to, to, you know, come, to address this situation on a timely basis. We can't keep carrying it.
And Mr. Chairman, I think to that end, the work that our deputy city manager, Alan Gard, is engaged in right now with looking at what the city's needs would be from a drainage, infrastructure perspective. And that includes whether or not the city takes over some of the resacas and dredging and maintaining those. I think that's what we're working towards right now. And I think that's got a reasonable timetable that we're looking at. Correct, Mr. Gard?
I, I would agree.
I, I think that timetable has already been shared with you all as well. Mr. Rendon, you all have that, right? Is it sometime in August or December? I don't remember exactly.
We'll do a check-in with the commission. We can share it again.
And, and did it change from 70 years to 20 years? Because you said it was a 20-year program?
No, it's, it's 70.
It's a 70-year program.
Seventy?
Seventy.
It's 20 years that the Corps of Engineers would be working and then the city's on the hook for the next 70 years to maintain and upkeep without any federal funding?
And this should not be the commission's decision to take private property. So, no. I, I would never go along with it.
Okay, but Marilyn, let's make a note of that. And we'll present it to the Board in a workshop. And let's see if we can come up with a hard calendar and share with the, with the City Commission.
And I think it would be good to have different options as well. I mean, if we don't go with this one grant, what would it look like alone with the simple fee? And what is the cost of everything? And I think that's just what we want to see is numbers. But no, we're all for, you know, the dredging of resacas. As I said previously, it's important for ecosystem and our drainage. And so, you know, however, we can help. So let's just see some numbers and we go from there.
I, I do have a question, if I may, for my colleagues over on P U B on the legal side. Since the city is the sponsor of the project, what will a timetable of 60 days, 90 days do if, if the city still has more due diligence on their part?
We'll talk about the calendars in coordination with you and taking into consideration what the city has planned. We're not the sponsor for the Corps' program, so the city is. So there was that P P A that needs to be negotiated. The, we're going at the speed of legislation, federal legislation, so it's not been very fast. But, but there's been some progress, some progress made.
And with that, can I just say one, because you brought up a good point. The city is a sponsor. And with that being said, I would kindly ask if we can have Helen O'Doroteo in the conversations when you guys go and speak with the Army Corps. I know the mayor is, you know, he's a great advocate for, on, on both sides. And being in the middle of things sometimes, I know it could be a little, a little pressure there. But he does a phenomenal job. He advocates for you all when we're on city business. But as you mentioned, you bring a great point. With that being said, I kindly request that you add Helen O'Doroteo in the room, since they are the sponsors and they will, will figure out on the programming of things. So thank you so much for that suggestion.
And I also want to thank Mayor and Commission. I think you all were the ones that paused the resaca program from increasing. So thank you very much for your leadership.
I think it was both Boards that were advocating for that.
And I just want to add, we, we brought down the US Army Corps of Engineers here. And we explained to them our concerns, and they got to see physically why we were speaking out. So I think that was very effective in trying to get them to change. So I think, I want to thank everyone for getting that done. So I thought that was very powerful.
Yeah, I agree.
And, and I think we will get an update, everyone will get an update. Mr. Garcia may have joined the call. That, you know, those meetings that the Corps are having now are really with the city's representatives, Mr. Garcia. And, and Mr. Mariscos there on B P U B's behalf, just as support. So we're making that, making those steps forward.
I would say that if we're speaking about land that are legal, needs to be in those conversations, because Mr. O'Doroteo is a technical. But it's important that we're talking about possible land impact to our residents or easement language, that our legal counsel be present. And we're happy to work with P U B and have a follow-up meeting to Friday's meeting so that we can include our legal counsel, because they would be ultimately reviewing that language that is proposed by them. And I think that's a way to be proactive, keep it articuler. Maybe every Monday, we ask them, you know, for a status of, of that. And we can report back to our respective Boards as to their responsiveness or lack thereof. And, but what we can do is we can commit collaboratively to be proactive and to, and to request this information or their decision, because they're ultimately the critical path, right? They ultimately have to accept that language or... And they also need to tell us what the, if the costs of the project costs of future phases have ultimately increased. So I'm sure Marilyn and her staff are committed, as we are to, as to Commissioner Villarreal's point, being proactive and trying to get the answers sooner rather than later. And to Chairman Rendon's point, that we need to do that. At least we can, as staff, you know, try to lead the charge and then report back to you all, as our respective Boards, whether they are being responsive or not to us. Thank you.
Can I, can I also make a recommendation? I'm, I'm looking at the number of people that are attending and I, I only see myself, Doro, and a few people. So I don't think anybody from the public is listening in yet. But at some point, this will be on YouTube. This is, could be the first time that the public has heard taking land. And so that there's no scare in the public.
City Attorney, can you speak more into the mic? Sorry, they can't hear on that side.
Yeah. Sorry, this thing is weird. My recommendation is that both sides work on some kind of literature, press release or something, because I don't want the public to misinterpret that we're taking land, right? Because we started talking about resaca fee and the resaca program, and then we went to taking land. And I don't want the public to misinterpret that. So maybe talk about the ongoing efforts that the city and P U B have with getting US Army Corps of Engineers to modify the project.
Great point. My final is, again, comments the mayor made, super valuable. Comments Dr. Samora made, super valuable, as far as informational. I, like you, Mr. Chairman, I would just say, we need a press conference ASAP. Whether this is on YouTube or not, we need to show collaboration, which a press conference does. If we have joint city, P U B, press conference to make awareness of where we are, even if we don't have the answers yet, it's where we are. And that is the truth. And, and our, both our entities, and I agree, we inherited a lot of things. But that doesn't mean we, we have to continue operating like our predecessors. We can be transparent. Our, both entities have been criticized for lack of accountability and poor financial management. And I don't believe that they currently stand that way. So I believe that we owe it to the constituents to hold a press conference and say, "This is where we are." And this is the truth. This is where we are. We have, we really don't know. We can't predict. But this is what we're looking at right now, and we have the citizens in the forefront of the decision-making. But this is 100% where we are today in February of 2025.
I think that's absolutely necessary. I think the comments that Will made are very valuable. And I think P U B administration and the city of Brownsville administration needs to come together to put this out there either on social media or through a, a joint coordination to the public. But I think we need to work on that very, very soon and very efficiently.
I would also add to that. I, a request to staff, to P U B staff and city staff, to work together to come up with, again, go-no-go decisions that can be presented to City Commission. And it, and it can be simple as we, we are, we will not take this project if A, B, C qualities are not met. And that way, that, that would help inform the public of where we're willing to go, where we're not willing to go. But that is something that can be done right now. We do not need to wait for any more information. We have enough information to make, make a decision as to what, what is it that we're willing to accept and what is that we're not willing to accept.
And I think to that, Dr. Samora, when we talk about needing to be at a place where we can make a go-no-go decision, we were there. We said go. Both sides said go. That was when there was no fee simple and there was no 75 years. We didn't change the terms. So now it's about, do we just walk away from it because the terms have changed and we know they're not acceptable to us? Or because we're seeing the needle move with the US Army Corps of Engineers getting away from fee simple and getting away from 75, or from the, the contribution from the city? Is there a workable solution? And I think that's the only reason there's the delay now. Because if it was just, this is what it is, fee simple's required, we'd have walked away already.
Right. No, I completely agree with you. There does seem to be a workable solution. But we, in, in order to avoid misinformation, like the public hearing that there's a plan to take away land, we need to be clear as to what it is that we're willing to take. So, but yes, I, I am in whole agreement with you.
Thank you.
Okay, this time I'd like to, I think it's time to move into a closed meeting. But before we move into closed meeting, I'd like to read some necessary language here. At this time, the agendas, the items on the agenda designated for closed meeting will be considered. Number one, joint executive session with the city of Brownsville Commission to discuss possible collaboration on economic development related to Project Onyx, as requested by the city of Brownsville under Texas Government Code Section 551.087, Economic Development Liberation, Texas Government Code Section 551.086, Certain Public Power Utilities Competitive Manners. So with that being said, I'm... So with that being said, I'm, I'm going to ask my board, do we have a motion to go into executive?
I motion to move into executive.
Mr. Matitas.
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Vadiad. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, the motion passes, we'll be going into executive at what time? At twelve forty-two.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city also go into executive session.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? If not, all those that gave a please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I just have a motion, Chris.
Can you, can you read into the record what section we're going under?
Item number one is, is close executive session for City of Brownsville, Government Code Section 551.087, to deliver Project Onyx.
She's gotta read something though.
Yes. Mayor, may we reconvene into open session? We are reconvened at 1:41 PM.
Okay, we are now back from closed meeting. At this time, there will be no action to propose or to put on the table. I do want to make a note that at 12:52, Mr. Martinez, who is a P U B board member, had to leave the meeting. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion on our side to close this meeting. We have a motion.
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
Dr. Samora has a motion, and we have a second.
I second that.
Second by Mr. Nahata. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All right, this meeting is concluded for P U B at 1:42. Thank you.
Aye.